I will call to order the city of Malden's regularly scheduled council meeting on March the 18th, 2024 approximately 7:00 PM. Let the records reflect that all council members are present along with our city attorney, Mr. Daniel Hughes, our city minister, Seth Duncan, and our city clerk, Ms. Miller, and various department heads spread all over out there. We appreciate everyone being here and it's always our public. Thank you for being here. Seeing the number of people in the audience, I would guess it probably has something to do with youth and recreation. Thank you for being here. We certainly appreciate it and we look forward to being on the program here shortly with you. I believe our invocation plays allegiance, Mr. Craigman?
If you would, bow your heads. Your heavenly Father, thank you for the great gifts you've given us, given us a wonderful world, wonderful country, great state, heckable city. Thank you for these blessings that you've given to us. Lord, right now, there's a lot of truths out there. There's also a lot of half-truths. Please grant us the wisdom to see and know the difference between them. Please bless this entire group here in the audience and up here with that wisdom and help us be better people. Jesus Christ's name, amen. Do you advise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is one of the great honors we have from sitting up here. And I'm going to come down there to do this portion of the program. It's our proclamations and presentations. Our first one will be Recreation. If Mr. Allgood, if you'll join me down front and Recreation staff, will you join me? It's always a privilege to be with this group here. All three of these young men raised me when I came through Recreation Program. I did come through the Recreation Program, yeah. Maybe it was my kids, it could have been my grandkids, but really appreciate tonight. I am going to let me read the proclamation here. Whereas the 2024 8U Malden Girls Basketball Team won the 2024 8U Girls State Basketball Championship. And whereas this is the first time ever that the 8U Girls Malden Recreation Basketball All-Star Team has won the 8U SCAP State Championship. And whereas the team swept through the SCAP District and State Tournament without a loss. Whereas they defeated Central Clemson in the District Championship and then defeated Bluffton with the score of 27 to 6 to bring home the state championship. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Terry Merritt, Mayor of the City of Malden, along with my fellow council members, do hereby recognize the 2024 Malden 8U Girls Basketball Team for winning the state championship. Now the next part of that is these gentlemen will recognize the coaches and the team members.
Thank you, parents, coaches, and players for being here tonight. We truly appreciate y'all and y'all commitment to representing the city and the Recreation Department. I know it is not easy to ask y'all to drive all over the place in the state, but you guys, y'all did it, y'all won it, and we're proud of y'all, very proud. First, I want to start off by thanking also the players because they made, it was only nine of y'all, nine girls in our program for the 8U. And all nine made that commitment to be on the team and representing. We didn't know at first for sure if we was even going to have a team, but for all nine of y'all to commit to the team and actually represent and get the thing done, that was awesome. So I'm truly proud of y'all. And y'all make sure, y'all let your parents know, thank them for traveling all across the state to help y'all be able to accomplish y'all goal. Coaches, I thank y'all for y'all commitment to all that time, those extra practices, putting in all that work for the kids. That's true, that truly goes without being noticed and I thank y'all so much for that. So with that being said, coaches, first I want to start off by introducing up head coach Sarday Moore. We have assistant coach Nicole Williams. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Moore. She's gonna introduce the players.
Hey, everybody. Thank y'all for allowing us to come in, show our faces, and we appreciate y'all supporting us as well. These young ladies really played their heart out. I'm very proud of them. We're gonna start with Zee. Zaraya, sorry. At the Zaraya, we have Audra. I didn't know them in order. My apologies, guys. I did not know we were giving out certificates. I will call them in order instead. Audra. All right, Leila. Up next, we have River, who was unfortunately able to make it because she was sick. We have Chloe. We have Kayla. Got a blue shirt. We have Ava. We have Nia. And last but certainly not least, we have Aiden. And this is our Aiden undergirls that went and took it all.
All the parents and refs, you want to come up and take the picture, feel free to come on up. And I failed to introduce each one of our council member chairs, a standing committee. Mr. Allgood, Chair of Recreation. Our next proclamation, not proclamations, our next awards will be presented by the City of Malden's own American Legion Post 271. They're here tonight to present an award to our Police Officer of the Year and our Firefighter of the Year. So if John and Leo's Burton will come up, the Chiefs will come up, Ms. King, if you wouldn't mind joining us.
All right, that's a tough act to follow. Those ladies are cute. I'm John Burton, American Legion Post 271. I am the executive committee member. This is my wife, Kim Burton. She's the adjutant. And then also our commander in the audience and his wife Helen. Commander Ken Hinkle is commander of Post 271. And Stephen Goshorn is our service officer. Well, I'd like to thank you for having us. It's my great pleasure to recognize two of Malden's finest tonight. And I guess we'll start with police officer. All right, the American Legion, Malden Post 271, would like to present 2024 Police Officer of the Year to Thomas Fazio. The recipient is chosen and the selection process is based on exemplary service, dedication, bravery, contributions to public safety. This award recognizes the officer who goes above and beyond the call of duty to protect and serve our community. We have Officer Fazio, please. And also to go with that is the certificate. And also a token of our appreciation, it's $50 gift certificate to Bridgeway Brewery so you can start your celebration of this great accomplishment. We thank you very much. Congratulations. All right, next, American Legion, Malden Post 271, would like to present 2024 Firefighter of the Year, Tanner Matheson. The recipient is chosen and the selection process is based on outstanding service, bravery, leadership, contributions to fire safety and emergency response. This award honors the firefighter who has demonstrated exceptional dedication and courage in his duties to protect lives and property. Firefighter Matheson. Also to go with that is your certificate. And also to go with that, $50 gift certificate, Bridgeway Brewery, you can start your celebration, go with Bob Fazio. Enjoy.
Mayor, thank you. I guess for the sake of transparency and full disclosure, I need to disclose, I am a member of American Legion Post 271. Proud to be a part of the organization. Next item on agenda is our Malden Chamber of Commerce report. Ozzy?
Mr. Mayor, Eric, and City of Malden Council, I am honored to stand before you today representing the Malden Chamber of Commerce. State of the chamber, growing together, our key aim is to fortify relationships with the city to promote mutual prosperity. The chamber welcomed nine new members year to date. Recent successful ribbon cuttings at Bridgeway Station, which includes Bridgeway Brewery Company and City Market. Thank you so much for your support and attendance. Events and initiatives, up and coming events, May 21, ribbon cutting at Baldwin Chase. April 17, date to be finalized, get acquainted with the Chamber Breakfast Open House. May 6, Malden Chamber Golf Classic at Holly Tree. Almost full, so if you haven't joined us yet, please join and set yourself up. June 15, Malden Chamber Car Show at Bridgway, Bridgway Station. So much going on there. Launching Quarterly Manufacturing Leadership Roundtable, this will occur quarter three. Partnering with the Small Business Association for Virtual Small Business Series. Increasing social media presence. Please follow us on Facebook at Greater Malden Chamber of Commerce. So in closing, as the Chair of the Malden Chamber, I'd like to say I want to extend my sincere gratitude to the City of Malden Council for allowing me the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. We deeply value our partnership with the council and remain dedicated to working together for the continued prosperity and growth of Malden. We can achieve great things together for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom Zee. Anyone in the chamber? Anyone on council have any questions for the chamber? Right? You're in none. Next item on agenda is our annual presentation of Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. Ms. Amo Awabadoo?
Dawn, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council members. Cindy, thank you. So I appreciate the opportunity for being here. It's that time of the year, once a year, we're coming here to talk about the funds that you will be getting and to kind of tell you a little bit about some of the programs also and some of the projects you've been done and success and what's going on. I don't have any GCR stuff with me or a board member, but they're in spirit with me. So we'll talk about what the annual action plan is and as we go ahead, we'll talk about the two funding sources that you will be getting. The Community Development Block Grant and Home. The other third funding, I'll talk about it as well. And of course, some of your program income funds from your home, CDBG, and some of the things that you'll be doing like your infrastructure improvement sidewalk projects. And some of the projects, your public service as well, as well as economic development funding for facade improvements. So what is annual action plan? Basically, every year, we have to put together a proposal to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, letting them know how we're going to spend every single dime that they're going to give to us. There's a program, a project aligned to every single dollar provided to the county. And as the funds come to the county, it's shared between all the different municipalities and one in core area as well. And it talks about the three funding sources we get every year from HUD, which is the Community Development Block Grants, the Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant. In this particular public area, and I won't go too much into the Emergency Solutions Grant because that's the funding that is available to everybody here in Greenville County, including City of Greenville, because they don't get that fund. And it's basically a fund that helps us address homelessness. We're able to provide funding to homeless providers for their outreach program or their shelter program. We're also able to help families who are about to be homeless or literally homeless. The 2024 Annual Action Plan basically starts July 1 of 2024 and ends June 30 of 2025. Incidentally, this is our last year of our current five-year plan. So when we come back next year, we will also present some of the needs assessment that we'll have done of the community because at that time, we're starting the next five-year plan. And that will include what people, their needs, their housing needs, the marketing and things like that. And I can bet you that affordable housing is still going to be on the top of the list of what we'll be seeing. This is something that we have to continue to address. But I can tell you also that in the last five years, we've done, there's been some impact, particularly in your city, done a lot to address that. The Community Development Block Grants, now say CDBG because it's so used to that, is it's a funding that is really helpful in addressing from housing to infrastructure to social service activities. So in economic development and even infrastructure demo, things like that. It takes a wide spread of things basically for you to address the community. One thing is for you to do any program or project, it must meet three particular national objectives. But in every way, you have to address, make sure that at least 70% of your funds are used to address low and moderate income family. I can tell you that historically, since we've been here with GCR, we always spend close to 90% of the funds addressing low and moderate income needs. And of course, slum and blight, you want to demo properties and everything for redevelopment, things like that, you can also use it. And you can also use it for urgent need. Home funding is basically what it says, housing. One thing with home funds is like it must address folks that are 80% and below, which is low and moderate income family. Greenville County in upstate area to have the highest income, median income. Right now for 2023, it's about 89,500. But that tells you that 80% of that, like a household of one, at 30% is about $17,000 a year. Household of one at 50%, it's about 30, sorry, 30, no. Yes, it's about $31,000. So these are working families. Household of one again for 80% AMI, it's about 40, a little over $40,000. So when you project to household of four and things, so everything is adjusted to household size. So we're talking about families that are working. So when we see affordable housing, it's really making housing affordable for working families. So, just trying to remind all those things. These pictures here, actually, houses that we've built in different places, and of course, you all recognize the duplex units, those that duplexes, nine duplex building on Miller Road, Miller Place Project, been doing well, fully occupied, barely get anybody out, because the units are close to 1,500 square feet. So, for 2023, I usually share a three-year funding. For 2023, the final ones, we start the 2024 with the 2023 allocation, because we don't have the numbers for 2024. So, those are your finals for 2023. I believe when we came, we didn't have the final numbers at that time, so now you have it. But for 2024, we'll wait for HUD to tell us how much of those funding sources, and then it will be distributed based on the same formula HUD uses as well, population, income per capita, income and poverty rate and things like that. And if you can see your CDBG rent, if we're given the same allocation as last current year, it's about $158,256 of the grant funding. You do have program income, and I'll explain what a program income is. For CDBG, most of the time has been either we did a rehab for a household, they're paying back. Money comes back to you as a program income, which you can reprogram again for other things as well. The home program income, a lot of it, the rent proceeds from any of the rental houses, comes back to you as program income. You may get to a state that sometimes your program income may just be as high as your grant allocation, but it's not something we can say we have to immediately reprogram it again. So, with the grant and home grants and everything total, if we're staying the same level of funding as it is as of today, we are projecting about $261,240 for fiscal year 2024. This is hard fiscal year, so it's changes from what we have here. Specific allocations for those funds, pretty much all of the home and home grant, home grant and home program income, we're projecting it and leaving it for housing. So, it could be for new construction, it could be for substantial rehabilitation, but it must be eligible for low and moderate income family, either rental or homeownership units. And then, of course, the rest of it, you do have two sub recipients, a senior program and the Center for Community Services. We did receive their proposals and we'll be sending you how we scored them for you to make final determination. Then we set aside some funds as well for economic developments, small business loans, and facade improvement in your central business or area. So, we will be doing the sidewalk for the project we have, so that's why we put some money in the sidewalk project. I usually share this program, so people are aware of some of the different ways we help to address affordable housing. It's not always the one shoe fits all. Some folks may need new construction and, you know, we have to increase the supply, we don't have enough. So, some of them could be substantial rehab that you sell, could be rental or homeownership. We also have funds as well that we gap finance developer projects. And that's, those four projects you have currently, two completed and two currently in the process, are all part of our gap financing with developers. Very attractive when you have life tech developers come to you and you're able to address their gap financing using part of your home funds and the Affordable Housing Fund from the county. So, that has really done a lot of good to addressing those. And then First Time Home Buyers Program. Our current program provides $10,000 for down payment, but we've seen that is not enough, so we'll be making some changes to that to increase the amount of down payment, because the housing cost here is really so expensive, so that $10,000 is not doing much at all for folks. And of course, we have the investor program, which landlords can take advantage of, you know, use up to $25,000 per unit. For $25,000, that could be used to rehab one unit, so if they have more than one, we could provide additional, as long as the cost of rehab is not passed down to the renter. So, that's the goal for that. And of course, CDBG funded or GCR funded housing development, homeownership units, we do have in-house finance, in which we call the Mortgage Loan Fund. We've had to use it a lot because of the interest rate that's been going around much higher. So, we're able to provide a lower interest rate to home buyers. And that's what we call the Mortgage Loan Fund. I didn't mention that the Emergency Solutions Grant is something I won't say so much about, but it's been helpful in the sense that we're able to help a lot of families who are about to be evicted or literally homeless. And in addition to this ESG funding, the home app, when we talked about it last year, now in implementation phase, it's really helped a lot of families. You think that after the COVID and everything have died down, but when we had the projects and the program started, there was an influx of people who came. And it just shows you that income is not meeting up to the rent. They're not able to afford the rentals out there. Most of them came basically almost homeless. And these are households that are working. So, the home app is, we have about three agencies that are helping. We have the Greenville Human Relations Office, which they can go to. We have a max amount, but it's been helping a lot of folks. And some of them were literally homeless, kicked out of their houses, that we had to help pay for deposit and part of the rent going forward. So, there's still a lot of issues with that. Like we said, the income that folks are making isn't enough. The high cost of rent in Greenville County. So, during that, good thing is, we have some partners that are helping us to get some of those supplies that is much needed. NHE with their Parker One Project, Butler, sorry, Butler One Project. Fully occupied, 72 units, low moderate income, 60% AMI was the max. It goes down. Part though, Butler Phase Two is now in progress. We provided them, it close to about, I think about over $600,000, which part of the funds, it's your home funds. Then the remainder was the Affordable Housing Fund. Interesting thing about this particular phase is, it's going to address income from 30% AMI all the way to 80% AMI. And the 30% AMI, families or household that's really at risk, I told you, 1% of 30% AMI is about $17,000. That's almost not much. You can't, you cannot find where that's paying 30%, 30% of their gross, you cannot find rent for $300 for. With their projects, we'd aiming at 30% AMI and 50% be able to help a lot of families. So, it's a balance between the 30 and 80% AMI, which is really important in Greenville County. They're going to be putting together about 80 units, and they usually, once they hit the ground running, they really run fast. We monitor their occupancy as well to see that they meet and they do what they say they're going to do. Mercy Housing South is which completed the Oli, the Olihi Place. So, between the first phases of these two developers' projects, you have about a little over 100 units that are affordable, 60% and below. Mercy Housing is also doing the same thing, 30% to 80%. This is really wonderful to see that the vulnerable part, our target community is being addressed. And having to increase that, there's mix on the spread of 30 to 80% AMI. And some of them, a percentage of them will come with household that have supportive services, either any kind of counseling or any kind of thing that's be working with them. So, this is also going to be on Butler Road. On the, the CDBG, like I said, the public service and the infrastructure. But one of the things I want to say is like, we have contract, procured a contractor that is going to be developing or installing, constructing the sidewalks along Mill, Miller Place and Old Mill, the yellow section. And that's basically the two sites of our Miller Place Project. So, we've issued the notice to proceed, so they could be starting anytime. Small business loan is still there. We provide up to $25,000 if you have any. They can always call our office and the facade improvement, of course. Right now, we're going through all the public hearing process. We hope to get all the municipal public hearings ended in March, so that it can all go to take everything over to the public hearing, the general public and the finest Greenville County Finance Committee in May, and final adoption in May. We're to send everything by May 15th, the way HUD time they give to us, unless they extend it, but everything will be submitted to HUD by May 15th. We're taking public comments, we'll still be taking public comments here and even up all the way to May 6. We will include everything before going to the county council.
Thank you, Ms. Emma. One thing I failed to note before I brought you up is that we would consider this a public comment, a public hearing meeting, which means it is open for any comments or questions of Ms. Awabadoo, including from Council. But you're good with that. If anyone has questions, just come to the podium and pose your question, or comment. It is not a bi-directional discussion. This is your time to comment on this and my comment, I'll save it for later. Anyone online will put public comment. Great job. Good. She did a great job. Thank you. I guess a few of us have been up here nine or 10 years, and we have valued the partnership with GCR. And the City of Malden has made progress in, in chasing this lucid gold of addressing our low income, moderate income and homeless population. So, great partnership. All of us were schooled on how to correctly pronounce Olihi Place. If you see the sign, you're going to say, oh, that's that Olive Place. It is Cherokee for friendly place, so it's Olihi Place. How did I know that? Because in my presentation out there at the ribbon cutting, I was corrected at least three times on how to pronounce it. So, we're extremely grateful for that. Any comments? You're none, seeing none, any comments from Council? Hearing, seeing none, we.
Tell Mr. Castillo we said hello.
Good move. Thank you. Hearing none, seeing none, then we would consider the public hearing closed. And we will move on to the next item on our regular agenda. Before Council is the CD Council Minutes of February 19, 2024. What's the pleasure of Council?
Move for approval is presented.
motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Steenback. Any comments, corrections, potential adjustments? You're none, all is in favor of the accepted minutes that's submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. It is unanimous. Next item is our Council Workshop on the same date, February 19, 2024. You have those minutes in your packet also. Pleasure of Council.
Move for approval as submitted.
For Reynolds' motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. King. Any corrections, adjustments? You're none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hearing none, minutes are approved as submitted. Next item on our agenda is our first public comment period. This public comment period is directed toward any item on the agenda. Your comments are always welcome, it's your opportunity to speak to this Council. It is also your opportunity to speak to us. It is not a bi-directional discussion, is not a question and answer session. We take your input seriously and would love to hear from you anytime and all the time. With that being said, our first person, Charles Garcia, if you would come to the podium, state your name and address. Direct your comments to Council.
Hey.
To me.
Charles Garcia, 209 Allender Way in Simpsonville, South Carolina, 29681. Really here to speak on 8A. I don't know if there's an opportunity to speak then, or we can just answer questions, just here to say hello. Seen the committee a few times already. I've also got our architect here to talk a little bit more eloquently about Summer Moon, but we're hoping that just what we've seen in the other locations, we've opened Summer Moon, the community has really embraced us. I feel like the concept is long overdue. My wife and I have been talking about it for years and years, we just didn't know it was going to be us bringing something like this to the local communities. But anyway, with that, I'll digress, and if there's any questions later, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Any questions, you're going to Mr. Garcia right now? All right. Hearing none, the next person, Nick. You'll come up and state your name and address.
My name is Nick Nachaia, business owner, distinctive details at 212 North Main Street. And I know part of the agenda was talking about the city center plan. And what an exciting time for Malden, that after over a decade of speaking about this project, it's underway. I just wanted to make everyone aware, I've been in touch with Seth, he's been instrumental between some of the business owners and the construction companies that are doing the work. Our concern is the air quality, especially in the line of work I'm doing. I've got videos of some of the dirt mounds that were out there for a long time, and it looked like the videos you see of Mount Everest in the snow blowing off, where this was dirt mountains with dirt flying in the air. So, finally, that's all gone, but there are two concerns we have. City has a piece of property, just one past the laundromat, and it's gotten to be where it's just barren and dirt. And right now, the wind's coming from that direction and it's almost unoperable. I can't even open car doors, there's so much dirt flying in there. I was hoping y'all could look into that and maybe spray something down that could hold it down for us. It came to my attention last week that the road right beside McFell in the project, they don't plan on paving it for six more months, is what I heard. And I'm hoping that certainly they can put something down, because there's a real fine dust right now, and as the trucks are going in and out, it's just mountains of dirt flying in the air. So, really, the concern is the air quality, and Seth has, you know, asked them many times. Unfortunately, we've only seen a water truck used once for dust control. And finally, just last week, right before a rainstorm hit, they washed the road as we're getting ready, I guess, to reopen that road. And so, that was just my main concern, to let y'all know, if y'all could please help us, because it's not just my business, which, you know, detailing cars is pretty tough with air and dirt flying in the air, but everybody's buildings and cars and the storage facility guy said he had to replace two or three air units, there was so much dirt flying in there back when they had all those mountains of dirt. So, we are, I know, I can see the progress being made, and I know that it is an exciting time, like I said, for Malden to finally get this thing underway. I just hope that y'all could work with us and maybe work with them to try to control some of this dirt a little bit more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Nick. Mr. Aaron Peters. Peter.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Yes, my name is Aaron Peter. Address is five sixteen Ravenna Lane in Greenville, South Carolina, two nine six oh seven. As Charles mentioned, I'm the project architect for Summer Moon. I've had the pleasure of working with him on his three other locations in the upstate and also very familiar with the city of Malden, with our work at Maverick Yards and Maverick Station. So we're honored to be working hopefully again in Malden, bringing this concept to the old B B and T building. I just wanted to highlight some of the design considerations going into that design. So we did the shell for that building as well, which I thought turned out great and is now going to be a staple in Malden. And similar to Bohemian Bowl with the transparency into the building, I think Summer Moon is going to have a tremendous opportunity on North Main Street to draw attention to that space. And then I know pedestrian access is a major concern. A thoughtful design through material changes on the paving, sight lighting, landscaping are just a few of the ways that we plan to make it approachable, not only from North Main Street, but then also thinking of the master plan and the town center, which we were also involved in. So we care deeply about this project and we think there's a tremendous opportunity, if we're given it, to make it a hub, a gathering place that's vital to any urban development. And something that we deal with on any project is the vehicular pedestrian interaction and how we deal with that. That's on any project, whether there's drive-through or just a parking lot, we care about bringing somebody safely from their vehicle to the building, whether it's by bicycle, pedestrian or vehicle. So just wanted to come up and speak and let you know that those thoughts go into the design very thoughtfully and we look forward to the opportunity.
Sir. Next item would be our report from our city administrator, Duncan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. So just a few items tonight, I want to share first of all, there's still time for the public to help shape the future of Malden as we continue to seek responses to the city's community survey for our five-year strategic plan. To date, we've received more than six hundred and twenty-three responses in the first week and a half of having it out there and available to the public. Strategic plan will help guide city council on identifying its vision for the future of our community as well as playing a crucial role in helping to define future priorities. Responses will be accepted until March thirty-first. A link to the survey can be found on the city's webpage at www.cityofmalden.org. Their survey is anonymous and confidential, takes about ten minutes to complete. And not only do we want to encourage folks to take it, but also share it with friends and family and others in the community to help spread the word and awareness. Back in twenty twenty-one, I believe, or twenty twenty-two, we did another survey and I believe we had about seven hundred and seventy-seven responses. So we are looking to eclipse that mark here soon and just want to encourage everyone to participate as they can. Next up, in April twentieth exactly, will be the Blues and Jazz Festival here at the city of Malden, we're really excited about. Join us for a weekend of blues and jazz. This annual event will feature a variety of your favorite restaurants and food trucks, complete with live blues and jazz music. Sink your teeth into the tastiest food around, wash it down with some adult beverages and groove to some live blues and jazz bands featuring John Namath, Mac Arnold, Greenville Jazz Collective and Kyle Odetta. So the festival kicks off at two P M. on that Saturday and will run till nine. It'll be at the cultural center grounds. For more information about all the shows, concerts and more that we have planned over there, check out their website at moldenculturalcenter.org. Next up, just to save the date, we have, are putting the finishing touches on the inaugural Bridgeway five K. Our community development team as well as Malden Police Department are working together to plan this inaugural event and is in part being funded through a grant received from Ten at the Top. The date has been set for Saturday, June first at twenty twenty-four, starting at eight A M. The event will include a five K fun run, beginning and ending at Bridgeway Station. More information will be available soon, but go ahead and get your running gear ready and we hope to see you out there. And last thing I just wanted to mention is that we have expanded our summer camps at the Malden Cultural Council, or it's Cultural Council, Cultural Center. And so you may see a flyer running around or out there and online. We've got some great summer camps planned, including both from young playwrights to behind the scenes and Shakespeare up, Broadway beginner, a little music Wizard of Oz event and a leading player camp as well. And so we encourage everyone to take a look at that, sign up for those camps and enjoy all the great things we have at the cultural center this summer. My report, sir.
Duncan, any questions for Mr. Duncan? All right, seeing none, we'll move to reports from standing committees, finance and policy. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. Those of you who could attend, we had the first workshop, budget workshop this past Thursday, went very well. Mr. Duncan kept it right at two hours for us, covered lots of ground. It's a very interesting time to be a municipal leader, time to be working on budgets, just with challenges both in the economy and with the growth of this city. So we're excited about moving forward that budget. The next budget meeting is going to be two weeks from this past Thursday, which is the twentieth, twenty eighth, that's what I was gonna say. Way off, Mr. Duncan. So figure your calendars for that. Those who can't attend, that's great. If you were not able to make it with the last workshop, please get some time, some face time with Mr. Duncan, who would love to sit down and give you the three-hour version of the budget and we'll look forward to moving forward from there. And that's all I have from finance and policy.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Public safety, Ms. King.
Nothing to report at this time, mayor, thank you.
Public works, Mr. Craylon.
Nothing to report this time, sir.
Economic planning and development, Mr. Mattney.
We're good, mayor.
Building goes, Mr. Steenback.
Nothing more than what we'll be talking about.
All right. Recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, mayor. If you were attending here earlier, you obviously saw our eight-and-under girls that won the state championship, but also wanted to recognize that our twelve-under boys team was the runner-up in their tournament. Congratulations to them on finishing second. And then also the, you have finished the bathroom upgrades at the senior center, so that senior center continues to get some love and care and we really appreciate where it is. Back to you, mayor.
Next item on agenda is unfinished business ordinance of our second reading.
Council is being asked to approve the sale of certain property along East Butler Road to S C D O T for the purpose of road improvements as part of the Butler Road Improvement Project.
Right, that item comes from Public Works, Mr. Craylon.
At this moment, I'd like to, I'd like to put a motion for city council to approve the sale of property along Butler Road, East Butler Road to South Carolina D O T for the purpose of the road improvement as part of the Butler Road Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Craylon, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Take it from Mr. Mattney. Any discussion? And in hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the sale of certain properties along East Butler Road to S C D O T for the purpose of road improvements as part of the Butler Road Improvement Project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Back to you, Ms. Miller.
Next is an ordinance for second reading, it's an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance, establishing regulations for temporary uses and structures.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, coming from Building Development Services, Mr. Steenback.
Yes, sir. Before, I would like to make a motion, I just want to point out, this is one of the, this is one of the things where it's really cool to see the city working to make things easier, to get things done and to do business. And it was, it's a recognition of the fact that we had some ordinances and laws on the books that weren't quite user-friendly. And staff came together and figured that out and fixed that and brought it to us. And so we're here to hopefully make that adjustment. So with that, I appreciate that, thank you, staff. Mr. Deerhog, thank you for your work on it as well. With that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve as written.
If a motion, Mr. Steenback, is there a second?
Second.
For Mr. Mattney, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion for approval of the ordinance to amend the regulations or standards for temporary use and structures in the city of Malden, this is second reading, so it is final, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion carries unanimous. Next item on agenda is section eight, new business ordinances, first reading. Ms. Miller.
First reading, first ordinance for first reading is an amendment to section five, six point sixteen of the Malden zoning ordinance regarding drive-through facilities in the central redevelopment district.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, also coming from Building Development Services, Mr. Steenback.
Yes, sir, you've, we've already heard in public comment from the architect and the owner. And so I think obviously the question is whether or not we're willing to make the exception. So that's what's here before us. I know it came through planning and also through the committee three and O.
Do you have a motion for us?
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm, I motioned that, I motioned that we approve as written. Did I do that right, Seth?
It's close enough. Take the staff recommendation, I'll say it. Your motion is to modify the ordinance or the allowance of a drive-through facility in the C R D in a minimal way that does not impact other properties along one ten North Main Street. All right, for the record, I want to read it in there. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds.
Just one comment, this was forwarded from the Building Codes Committee to the Planning Commission, as Mark mentioned, and that was a seven O vote from the Planning Commission. And those of you who have not had a chance to visit a Summer Moon coffee, it is a unique experience and a unique product to bring to this city, which if this passes, I'd be excited to patron.
All right, just for the record, when it comes time to vote, since the zoning commission announced we approved these changes, it would take a super majority for this council to vote no, in contrast to the zoning commission. Five votes. Okay, any questions? Mr. Mattney, comments, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say not question, but comments. I don't think that I have ever agonized as much as I have over a coffee shop, but it is so much larger than a coffee shop because we don't know, I mean, I certainly hope that Summer Moon comes in and I hope that they are a long-term tenant and a business neighbor of the city of Malden for years to come. But we can't, we can't pass ordinances based on a business as it relates to our C R D. I know that when this first, when this modification first came up, my thought was that we allowed the call-in drive-through with Sully's, that we allowed the drive-through with Tropical Grill and that there was another coffee shop that was slated to become a tenant in the former B B and T building. And, and they pulled out. My, my thought at the time was that we should not, we shouldn't pull back because we were going to allow an exception there. But that that was where we needed to make our, our line of demarcation. I had a discussion later with someone that, that I trust, who said, you know, you know what the plans are for this area and you really need to stick with those based on the vision that's there. And I, I agree with that completely. But as I have continued to wrestle and I've talked with Mr. Wyeth, with Penn Tail, and I told him as recently as Friday, Stuart, I don't know how I'm gonna vote. I have wrestled with this, I have gone back and forth, I don't know what I'm gonna do. It's, it's gonna be a game time decision and it, it's that held true because I thought about it over the weekend, I've thought about it all day. But ultimately, I, I said at the beginning that we said that this was going to be able to have a one-time drive-through, that it wouldn't be fair to change the rules in the middle of the game. So I'm gonna go ahead and vote in favor of the ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Mattney.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject? So, and I need to correct myself earlier about the votes required. So the five-vote rule only applies if planning commission makes a recommendation, recommendation denial. We take five votes to go against what the planning commission voted on. Here, we have a motion to approve, a majority vote, approve the ordinance. Obviously, if it vote, tie vote or vote the other way would, the ordinance we voted down. I just want to specify that for the council.
All right. So for the sake of the council, up or down requires four votes. Either way, good. No super majority. Comments? Strogg.
Thank you. If I could, since we do have representatives of the project here, I do have questions for them, if I could bring them up.
Sure. Which one?
It might be best for the architects, maybe? Maybe not? But it might be both of you in the end. You, you mentioned earlier when you came up, you talked about making sure that it was pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly, car-friendly and so forth. What are some of the things that, that you plan on doing that goes beyond the minimums that will allow for that? Because just in general, and this is where I'm saying something I probably shouldn't, but we've, we've had a couple of different developments that have come in and I press them like I'm doing to you right now to say, hey, what are you gonna do to go beyond what the minimum is? And there's nothing that really forces you. It's, it's really kind of a, hey, are you gonna agree to do this type of thing? And so we've seen some, some projects that didn't quite go the way that we had anticipated. So my, my question is, is truly, if you, if this is an important project that you guys are all about, what are some of the things you're doing for that cohesiveness, which is what this city village is all about?
So a plan would be great so I could point to it, but I'll, I'll try to walk you through visually. So on the front and the back, we've got outdoor patios. So that starts the, the visual connection from outdoor to, to the space itself. So you'll see active users and it will draw people to, to the space. So then getting to that space, and I'll start on the backside of the development because that's where ultimately have the Jenkins Court Extension and have more pedestrians coming from that direction. So we plan to have a direct path from the sidewalk along Jenkins Court Extension to the patio directly behind Summer Moon, which will cross through islands and then ultimately have a designated different material path across both lanes. So, so the vehicular lane that goes to parking and then the drive-through lane. So it will be a designated, just like in downtown Greenville, when you cross Main Street, there are, there are walkways that identify this is a pedestrian area. So through signage, material change, landscaping, sight lighting, as I mentioned earlier, all of those things draw attention to the pathway so that it's inviting from Jenkins Court Extension through to the development, to the back patio, then ultimately into Summer Moon. And so as you enhance that experience, it, it becomes, and through material change, it becomes a known pathway, if you will. And so we've also talked about a raised table, if you will, where, where we raise the grade there so that it's a speed bump, if you will, that further identifies that as a pathway. And so those are some of the things that, that we plan to do if we have the opportunity.
What about from a ADA standpoint?
So the, the building will have, will be ADA compliant, so, and it's already designed that way. So the So the, um, from, from the exit of the building to the right-of-way is ADA compliant. Um, and it will be the same when we connect to Jenkins Court extension. Um, those grades in the back are not final yet beyond our property. Um, but that, that will be marrying up of grades to make an accessible development. Right now, the grades are, are in our favor, so we don't have an issue as is. But that's absolutely will be addressed. Uh, we just can't do it yet beyond our property.
If I can add to that, um, in addition to, you know, signage along the front where the majority of traffic is, we have plans, in fact, I've already sent it to our sign vendor to, uh, to have signage on the back facade of the building facing Jenkins Court. I don't know if I'll put that in initially, um, because there's, there's nothing back there, but we will have that. Um, also, on the front of that building currently, um, it's not a requirement, but at the bequest of someone here, um, we have, we're moving the front doors of this space to the storefront along the, the front, and we're adding a front patio to address Mc-North Main Street. So we, we are going to, so even though Seth thankfully went to the plan, we can see here, we've enhanced it beyond that just based on comments received. And, and I think it's a great idea. We, we had talked about it initially, but the way that ramp comes down in front of that building is a little quirky anyway, but we're gonna move the, the main entrance to that space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds? Nope, I'm sorry.
Nope, I was just gonna make clarification that the ordinance was, the motion was in favor of the ordinance, that was all. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. My turn? I know all of you have been waiting for that. So I've been on council and up here now for what is nine years and only Mr. Mattney has more seniority, uh, year. I know when I first got on council, I was gonna solve all our problems according to the opinion of Terry Merritt. Didn't work out that way. But I've also been through a lot of different things and we've seen that. And one of the things we did was it took a lot of discussions, I think, when Mr. Mattney convinced me that the city center, we're now calling it downtown walkable village concept was real. And yes, Nick, we've talked about it for over 10 years. And, uh, Dr. Maffels even decided he wasn't sure if he was gonna be around to see us ever do anything. Well, now we're doing it. So I like the plan, the process, uh, all the educational arenas that we've availed of ourselves show that it is the right thing to do for a city that had no real downtown, just to pass through. And it didn't appeal to a lot of people. Now, there's a lot of people in the four neighborhoods that look like me, older, mature, uh, patio homes. That wasn't it. We had ranch-style homes, we had a third quarter half-acre lots, we cut grass every Wednesday. That's not the demographics coming to the city of Malden. Coming to Greenville County today, if you look at it, uh, we just went to a meeting last week, the average age of influx in the Greenville County area is thirty-two years old. Thank goodness they drink coffee too, just like seventy-four-year-olds, all right? So we're good there. Uh, and also the fifty-five-plus generation is coming here. Patio homes, cluster homes, apartments, townhomes. And irregardless of what you read, Malden doesn't have a lot of apartments or townhomes, didn't have. Now, townhomes, we're making great inroads on. Uh, apartments, not so much. But, uh, that's the demand we have. It's not driving cars to all of it. They wanna be able to go downstairs to go over to a coffee shop to sit. They open their laptop, they sign on, they're at work and they're drinking coffee. That's a win-win, right, Josh? So, uh, it's a different type of approach. And, uh, I've seen that. I'm also still somewhat stubborn. We have argued this point, I'm sorry, we have discussed this point many, many times on our CRD. It's been in, it's been out, it's been tweaked, it's been back out, it's back in. I'm stubborn. Uh, we got it done last time and I thought we were done with it. We've had discussions with various other potential businesses and, uh, they didn't come because it didn't have a drive-through, because it did not have a drive-through. So for us to tweak it now is problematic for me. Keeping the traffic to a, a minimum on that Jenkins Court, i.e. Main Street, is important to me. I want them all to turn in Jenkins Court and immediately park at Dr. Maffels office. All right? Yeah, with an animal for him, all right? And so, uh, so other than that, I don't wanna drive through, cutting through to East Butler to get around the red light and things like that. So I wanna keep the traffic to a minimum. So I was pretty adamant in the fact that we're not gonna do this again. I hope we're not gonna do this again. So the drive-through was settled. I've seen the architect engineer, the drawings and everything's like that. And I have visited the, uh, Summer Moon over on Woodruff Road. They have basically the same tight drive-through, making that left turn when you get through the drive, make a left turn back. It's tight there. Then when you go back out to Woodruff Road, there's a right turn only. So I've watched that traffic over there and it flows. Uh, beautiful, beautiful building. I mean, uh, the, the colors of the building they chose, uh, I remember when it was a seven-eleven store, it didn't look that good at all, but it really looks great over there. Now it's clean inside, it's a lot of laptops sitting around and a little conference room in the back that you could go have a little meeting, I guess, back over there kinda thing. So I love that appeal to it. I was still on the decision that it just is not gonna fit the old BB and T building, American Federal, the others some in there. And then I got an email and I got an email from Stuart Wyeth. I probably mispronounced that. But in his email, so if I share the detail then. His meeting with our, our, our staff, that he submitted notes related to removing all existing or proposed temporary, um, temporary connection points from one-ten North Main Street to the future Jenkins Court. And he had a drawing where he was willing to block off any access to Jenkins Court and keep the drive-through going. And one of the things I have learned in my years up here is we have to be civil toward one another. We don't have to be, but we should be civil, understanding various viewpoints, but we also sometimes have to compromise and see, is it a greater good? I can envision a day when we do have businesses up and down Jenkins Court, Main Street, uh, walkable. And a Summer Moon Coffee Shop would be very appealing to those people walking up and down there. So with that being said, if we can get that in writing, that he will block off those two access points, I'd be willing to compromise and say, uh, what Mr. Deere-Hoff has come up with in the building development services, uh, very ingenious wording to allow that to go through and keep that traffic where it is not accessible backwards to the downtown walkable village, but has to go back out on Main Street. I also spent a lot of time with this. Uh, I really was prepared to be the old stubborn terrorist of net, we done this, this over and done with. But based on his email and, uh, what I'm seeing and what I am seeing and what we're moving forward to, uh, I would have to vote in favor of this tonight also. I wouldn't have to, but I will. Put a paper. Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to add that we have had many, many discussions about that location. And honestly, I thought I was gonna be in, on an island by myself tonight because I think David did a wonderful job with, with writing, um, updating the ordinance. I think the developer has, has more than met us halfway. The things that we came back with and said with the patios and the outdoor space that we would like to see, you've accommodated us with that. So, um, on Friday, as Taft alluded to, it, it wasn't quite a game day decision for me, but I was struggling again with being the only one on the island because I was in support, I was gonna support and still am, the, um, the ordinance change to allow your coffee shop to come to our city. I think it'd be a great asset. Um, and as the mayor said, sometimes we do have to compromise. Um, two months ago, I was a hard no and, um, this is what it's all about, watching two groups work together and, and making something great happen for our city. So obviously I am in support of the ordinance tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. King.
It's great. Yeah, um, first of all, I'm kinda disappointed that the mayor was so kind. Yeah, it just, it just, it just threw me off for tonight. Um, but with that being said, um, you know, I do like, do like the designs, I like the, you know, the appeal, the ideas, the concepts. But for me, it was kind of how, how we got to approve the last time when we went through it, there were some things that weren't clear as we began. We're clear now. So I will be approving it for that same reason because that's how we started it. Uh, with that being said, though, I'm not gonna be changing, making any changes. You're a great architect, but unless it's Noah's architect, I don't think I'll be making any more changes to any of what we're doing down here. So this is my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Krailin. Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor, you would say compromise and I would say enlighten. That's how I would define it. But either way, um, appreciate your, those of you who are struggling with this decision, uh, so mightily, um, giving it sincere thought and, and not just taking it, stamping it and moving on. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So you're in agreement with me, I might have to reconsider my vote. Caught me off guard there. Anyone else? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to accept the modifications to the ordinance for the allowance of a drive-through facility in the CRD in a minimal way that does not impact other properties aside from one-ten North Main Street, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? That was unanimous. That's the way that we roll. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Miller.
Next is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Andrew and Alexandria Smith and located at three twenty-five Bridges Road by one-hundred percent petition method and to establish the zoning classification of R-15 residential for said property.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Miller, coming from BDS also, Mr. Steinbeck.
My name is on this agenda entirely too much.
Yeah.
Get used to it.
I guess the one concern that I still have that I just wanna raise is making sure, make a motion. I move that we, um, approve the annexation.
Three fifteen and three twenty-five.
All right, I have a motions that are second. Second of a Ms. King. Any discussion, Mr. Steinbeck?
Oh, all right, thank you.
You're fine.
My, my concern is making sure that whatever we zone this as is, is going to benefit us long-term. Uh, I know there's a couple other parcels of property where we've annexed and maybe, you know, didn't think quite as far down the road in the past and some things have popped up that maybe exactly hoping for. I just wanted to really think through that. I know you and, you know, Mr. Duncan and I've talked about that some, but, uh, still, still gnawing at me a little bit.
Note here, I think to get this order correctly, David, correct if I'm wrong, we should do three twenty-five first. Okay, so I wasn't sure what motion that I lead you into making, was it for three fifteen or three twenty-five?
Yep.
Okay, we have to, they have to be separate. Three twenty-five is contiguous to the city limits and then three fifteen is contiguous to three twenty-five if three twenty-five comes in. But we have to do them in order. So the first one would be three twenty-five in order to, uh, make it legal. So is that all right with you?
Yeah, I would, I would happy to amend my motion.
Okay with you? The motion is three twenty-five instead of three fifteen? Is it okay we just leave the motion in second standing and just change it to three fifteen to three twenty-five?
Works for me.
I think it's the,
It's the way it's written in the ordinance, so I think we're fine to,
Okay.
proceed with just first ordinance on three twenty-five Bridges Road.
Got it. All right. Change that to second. Sorry, I didn't catch that. I wanna look down. All right, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the annexation of, uh, three twenty-five Bridges Road with a, with a requested zoning of R-15, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
No.
All right. The records reflect the no was Mr. Krailin. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, back to you, Mr. Steinbeck.
All right. The, the, now we are on to three fifteen, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the annexation of three fifteen Bridges Road as is presented before.
Thank you. I have a motions that are second.
Second.
Back from Ms. King. Any discussion? Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Clarification, this was, these were the two properties that were, uh, one of them was tagged on to our sewer system already and we were trying to, um, backwards here and address that, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reynolds? Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Good night. Any other discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the, except the annexation of three fifteen Bridges Road with a, uh, zoning of R-15 residential, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign?
No.
Six one, with Mr. Krailin deciding. All right. Next item before us, uh, is standing committee items. You can rest, Ms. Miller. First one is authorization sell equipment and, uh, public works, Mr. Krailin.
Just I'd like to make a motion, uh, to, um, authorize the selling of the equipment listed, uh, in our, uh, agenda here.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Krailin, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Ms. King. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to proceed with the authorization of the listing of the old damaged equipment on the governor deal website, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Uh, next item from recreation, Mr. Allgood.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would request that, uh, make a motion that we approve the part of grant modification for Pine Forest Park with the total appropriations not to exceed fifty thousand.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Reynolds. Any discussion? Here none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the part grant for Pine Forest Park not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Here none, the motion carries unanimous. Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Afraid we're going to leave Mr. Mattney out, but we are not. Economic Development, uh, Mr. Mattney?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we, uh, we award Seaman Whiteside a contract for the creation of the City Center Village Master Plan and authorize a total expenditure not to exceed $33,000 for the project. And that is with $25,000 coming from municipal association grant and a local match of $8,000 coming from the Community Development Special Projects Line Item.
Yeah, promotion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Krailin. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recognize in this motion that, Mr. Mattney, you'll agree that this will not become a dust bowl on one of our shelves. This is going to be something that we use and refer to and try to grow this city's downtown for a long time.
I, I think I can say, Mr. Reynolds, that we're moving forward and I don't think that there's a person on this dais that has any intention of stopping.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One thing I would note that we strike the word dust bowl. Yeah, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to award a contract to Seaman Whiteside for the creation of the City Center Village Master Plan for a total expenditure not to exceed $33,000, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, like sign? Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Uh, next item for us comes from Public Safety, Ms. King.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't get left out either.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to make a motion at this time, um, for council to approve the reallocation of $45,000 in ARPA funding for the Police Department and Court Operations Security upgrades.
All right, I have a motion for Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Krailin and a couple of others, I wasn't sure where we got them all. Okay, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the reallocation of $45,000 in ARPA funding for the Police Department and Court Operations Security upgrades, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. Next item that could come before us has to come at its committee of a whole, so I would ask the pleasure of council for a motion to consider the next two items as committee of the whole.
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Mattney, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. King. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of considering next two items, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign? Hear none, we'll now consider ourselves as committee of the whole. This item will be the GCR A resolution. What's the pleasure, council?
Mr. Mayor, I made the motion for council to approve the, um, the GDBG, wait, I'm on the wrong page.
Hear none.
I went ahead to the next one. Or did I? No, I'm good.
You're all right. You've had your, uh, your letters mixed up.
Yeah, see, I was where I was supposed to be. Motion to approve, um, the CDBG resolution.
Thank you, Ms. King, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Steenback. Any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the attached CDBG resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hear none. Sorry, I'm making notes and trying to talk at the same time. Motion is approved, seven zero. That's my final statement. Next item before us, alliteration, uh, pleasure of council, the capital project sales tax project list. That would probably come, Mr. Krailin, would you like to handle it?
Yes, again. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for council to approve the priority list of, of roads or the, from the city, for city roads and state county roads, uh, to be sent to, what's the committee's name?
Counties.
Okay, counties' capital projects, sales.
Okay, a promotion, Mr. Krailin, is there a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Allgood?
Thank you, Mayor. Just so the, the public is aware, this is regarding, uh, a possible capital project sales tax, uh, the county council is looking at implementing. So when we're talking about these projects, it's a matter of whether or not they would be part of the referendum that would be voted on, correct?
Yes.
That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood. Anyone else?
What I was going to say? All good?
Yeah, for our audience to be sure that you understand, and you probably have seen it on the news, the county council is considering a referendum in, or November to ask the citizens to approve the passing of a one, one percent sales tax, one cent sales tax. And by doing it through what they're calling the capital project, all the projects that could be handled by that revenue generated by the sales tax would have to go to the listed projects. They're all roads. It could not be money for anything else except roads. So in a lot of discussions we've had with county council and some, uh, their staff members, the surrounding municipalities, Greenville, Greer, Malden, Simpsonville Fountain Inn, I think I got them all. Travelers Rest is in there. Travelers Rest, sorry, don't want to forget Randy. That we were asked to put together a list of projects in our city that needs, vastly needs road improvement. We've heard from our citizens and our business owners and those traveling through our city, we have to do something. We've got to do something. So this is the best method they've able to come up with, directly calling it a capital project. So if it makes it to the ballot, when you get to the ballot to check yes or no, read, because it's going to have every project listed that can be taken on by the revenue generated by the one cent sales tax. Nothing else. No walking trails, no sidewalks, no, uh, you name it. Public transit improvement, it has to go to the roads. And we're hearing that it doesn't matter if they're state roads, county roads or city roads. Those of you who know Malden know we have a large population of state roads, county roads, and a little bit of city roads to get us around. City roads we addressed a few years ago and we've been taking those and we've got, I think we've identified all those that are less than 50% and below taken care of. But now we've got to get some of the others. There's some of them on that list, you see, uh, Forrester Drive and B, uh, some of the others are state roads. The county has said if we put them on our list, which we're asked to do tonight, there's more than 10. But we said we only would recommend our top 10. We were told, send us your top 10. So all those will be compiled by a potential commission that is being set up or being asked to be set up by the county council. Be made up of six members, three appointed by the county council. City of Greenville gets to appoint one. And then they get to pick the other two members from the other municipalities. So the second, the largest city municipality is City of Greer. Second largest is the City of Malden. Then it goes Simpsonville Fountain Inn, Travelers Rest. So we are asking this council to approve this list. We're, we're proactive. We have skin in the game and we hope we get recognized as one of the top needs for some of the road, uh, attention. So that's kind of an overview, probably more than you wanted to know, but, uh, I want to be sure you understand it. There's lots of arguments about government spending. But I've been here all my life. Our roads cannot go on the way they're going. Yes, I have roads that I've talked to Mr. Duncan about that I wish was on the list, they're not. But we'll try to go through that. This is the first time the county's done it. We can talk about the two cent sales tax that went on at state. All that many one, money went to Columbia. This money will not go to Columbia. At least by the county. Maybe DOT has to do some of the works and it might get a little bit of money in there. But anyway, that's, uh, we're here from the government, trust us. Okay. Yeah, we've heard that all our lives, dude. So with that being said, I, I like the approach. Is it a perfect approach? No. Fix everything, do everything with no money, not an option. So, uh, we've got different points on that. Anyway, that's my second speech for tonight. Anyone else have any comments? Hear none, all those in favor of the motion to send to county council approval the priority list of roads and projects for inclusion in the potential county's capital project sales tax ballot initiative, took care of it? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign? Hear none, the motion carries unanimous. The second item concluded that will take us out of committee of the whole, back to our regular agenda, public comment, uh, one person signed up. Rowley, your turn, come to the podium as you would, state your name and your address. What's on your mind?
Uh, Raleigh Heist, uh, 104 Swinton. Uh, I was here to talk tonight about the survey, the community survey. But, uh, the lady told us about the sidewalk that might be coming down Miller Road. So I'm real, real happy about that. Anyway, uh, the survey is, uh, it's a loaded question survey because we have so many things that need to be done in the City of Malden. We're growing so fast. I, I looked at the survey and how could I pick number one or number two or number three? I mean, you guys got your hands full as it is right now and you're asking me to pick number one, number two, number three? No, it ain't going to work that way. But, uh, I appreciate, uh, putting a survey out there. I hope a lot of people respond to it and do their thing as, uh, citizens, community citizens. And, uh, I certainly hope that, uh, we can, uh, go through this growth spurt that we're in. I mean, uh, I moved here in 77 and, uh, wow. I mean, man, I could have been a rich man if I'd have bought some property. But that's beside the point. But thank you so much for what you're doing and, uh, I sure hope that, uh, sidewalks get in. I really, we really need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Raleigh. Also to mention Raleigh is a member of American Legion Post 271. Appreciate him very much. Next, uh, anyone online?
Yes, sir.
I wrote down online because I always forget that. Uh, next item, council concerns. Mr. Allgood?
Thank you. This is, this is really for, for Seth, kind of going, when you go back. Obviously during public comment earlier, we heard about the dust bowl, as it was referred to. I, I would just be curious that maybe at a future council meeting, if we could look at, I've, I've had that complaint before from other different projects that have happened. And my curiosity is, is there lack of control on our part and ordinance part? Is it just developers who just get away with it until they get caught? But I'd just be curious, um, what, what our, our standards are and it might be just something to review at a committee level, um, for future reference. The other question that I had, uh, just because the gentleman to my right, uh, when he was bringing up motions, he made me think he was going to say nay to a vote when he was bringing up something. And I remember you and I had a conversation before about if you were to bring forth a motion, you should be in support of that motion. Of course, everybody who brought forth a motion tonight was in fact for that motion. But if the mayor comes and says, yeah, let's say it was, comes to me and I'm not for the, the motion, but it's under, under recreation. What, what do I do at that point? Is it, do I just toss it back to the mayor? What, what would be the proper procedure?
We might be able to probably address that through some parliamentary memo. I can address that to council.
Thanks, Jim.
Best way to handle that question?
I'll help, appreciate it.
Only thing I want to bring up, uh, I mentioned about the sidewalks. And I know, I, almost everybody here has been wanting the sidewalks down that road, especially near that bridge where kids are walking to school when it's raining. So just, it's been, uh, something we've been wanting, working for, for, for a long time. So I'm glad to see we're moving now.
Mr. Krailin? The other council concerns, comments? Let me flip back to speech number three. I'm kidding. I have nothing. Uh, next item adjournment, what's the pleasure, council?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Krailin, all those favors, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, hear none, we are adjourned.